Okay, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the June 17th meeting of the Springfield Planning Board. Phil, would you read the roll call, please?
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran? If you could just remember to unmute yourself and...
Not working. Yes, I'm here.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Here.
Mr. Florian?
Here.
Ms. McQuade?
Here.
And Ms. Joy?
Here.
So we have a quorum.
Okay, there are no minutes to be approved, so we can go to the first petition that was tabled last meeting.
Yeah, so, so under public hearings continued, a liquor license, all alcoholic, new, location 238 Chestnut Street, petitioner Papa Ram Associates LLC doing business at Top Shelf 2. So again, just, just for the, for the live audience, we did receive a letter from the Armory Quadrangle Association. The only caveat that they had was they were waiting to see if there was some violations, but they're, they're unable to get that information, but I'm, I'm not sure that should hold up the board from moving forward. But they did, and they did vote to approve.
Can I just ask if this is the same letter that was included in our Planning Department packet that Mr. Dromy had originally emailed me before our last meeting? Or is this something that's been dated since then? Because I think the letter said essentially that. I don't know if it's the same one.
I honestly don't, I don't remember. This is from Betsy Johnson?
Yeah, the letter I got from the, that we have before the first meeting said essentially that. I don't know if there was a new one or not, that's all.
No, this is still dated March 2020.
Okay.
Okay, are there any further questions from the board members from, in addition from last time?
I mean, the only issue that I'll, I'll, I know it was raised at the last meeting, at the hours of operation. I, I don't object to the, to the increase in the, in the hours. So that's the only comment I have.
Peter?
Okay.
Um, it's Rosemary. Do you, are you aware of any violations or problems?
I asked Anna to check the file and there are none.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, if there are no other questions or concerns, I would accept a motion to close the hearing.
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, Leo. Is there a second?
Second.
Rosemary, okay. All those in favor? Can we just raise our hands?
Well, I'm not on video, so I would prefer to use speaker.
Okay, that's fine. So the motion passes to close the hearing. Everyone raised their hand and Chelsea gave a voice. Do I hear a motion about this petition?
I make a motion to accept it, to approve it with the following conditions. The hours of operation shall be limited to no later than 2:00 AM. Is that correct? The application shall confirm the total number of parking spaces required for this new use with the building department. If these spaces cannot be accommodated on site, then a variance from the Board of Appearance may be, appeals may be required. If required, the variance should be obtained prior to the issuance of the liquor license. Three, any and all signage shall be properly permitted through the building department. Four, there shall be no banners, streamers, pennants, or promotional materials located on the exterior of the property.
I'll second the motion.
Leo seconds the motion. Phil, should we do a roll call vote, just to be sure?
Yeah, I am going to ask for a roll call vote for the approval, so...
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Joy?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Motion has passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Phil, our next one?
Oh, not one second. Under continued hearings, all alcoholic, new, location 1500 Main Street, petitioner White Lion Brewing, Brewing Company, doing business as White Lion Brewery. Just so the board is aware, I have not received any additional comments on this, so... You know, there, I don't see any, any issues with moving forward.
Does the board have any other questions or concerns?
Nope.
Not, I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, Jen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rosemary. All those in favor? Oh, excuse me, Phil?
Well, I think if I say aye, I think we're okay with closing the hearing. We'll do a roll call for the votes.
Okay.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Do we, we have to make a motion to approve it with the conditions, correct?
No, no, we're just closing the hearing now, Leo.
Okay.
All right, so all those in favor of closing the hearing?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Motion passes. Now I'll accept a motion to, regarding the petition.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve with the following conditions. The hours of operation shall be as stated by the petitioner. There shall be no banners, streamers, pennants, or promotional materials located on the exterior of the property. And number three, any and all signed permits shall be obtained prior to installation.
Thank you, Leo. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you, Jen. Phil, would you do roll call, please?
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next one? Mass Mutual?
Yes, under public hearings continued, zone change number 3213, North Side Buckhold Street and North Side Providence Street at all, proposed zone change from Residence B to Commercial P, petitioner Mass Mutual Life Insurance Company. And again, I have not received any additional comments on this particular zone change, so it is the recommendation of the staff to move ahead and approve.
All right. If the board has no other concerns or questions, we will close this hearing. Do I have a motion?
I move to close the hearing.
Thank you, Rosemary.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Leo. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Now I'll accept a motion to approve the petition.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Leo. Second?
Second.
Was that you, Jen?
No, it was Rosemary.
Oh, Rosemary, sorry.
It's okay.
Can we do roll call?
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Next item is zone change 3214, address East Side Clarence Street at all, proposed zone change from Residence A to Commercial P, petitioner Mass Mut- Mass Mutual Life Insurance Company. Again, I received no additional comments. I did receive a call from, from the, from the homeowner who lives at the end of Clarence, but I, I sent him a copy of the plans and I have not heard anything back, so I'm assuming he had no additional comment. I think he was just a little concerned that the parking was going to be right next to his house, but I'm... As per the plans that were shown last time, the parking does not go over there, so I did not hear anything back from him, so we recommend approval.
Okay. Do you have a motion? Does the board have any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, Jen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Leo. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chelsea?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Hearing is closed. I'll now accept a motion to, for approval of the petition.
Make a motion to approve the petition.
Thank you, Rosemary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jen. Phil, if you will do roll call?
Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Here, yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
Ms. Troy?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Last zone change, under continued hearings, zone change number 3215, address 11 Merwin Street, proposed zone change from Residence B to Business A, petitioner Zahor Hak, I hate to butcher that name, but... Again, just so the board knows, I have received no comments on this particular zone change. So we are recommending approval, and again, in addition to the zone change, it will require a special permit from the City Council, which I believe will be going to the City Council in August. I think this, this zone change will be heard at the end of June, but the special permit won't be heard until August.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from the board? Hearing none, I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, Jen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leo. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. I'll accept a motion to approve this petition.
I'll make a motion to approve this condition, zone change 3215.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second. I'll second.
Thank you, Leo.
Voting in favor to approve the zone change, Mr. Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Okay, the petition passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, our last item from the previous meeting, this is for a site plan review, address 2071 Roosevelt Avenue. It is for the renovation of an existing building for a proposed K through 8 middle school and associated uses. Petitioner Springfield Preparatory Charter School. As I, as I mentioned previously, the only comment we received was from a parent from the school, and they were recommending that, that the, it was from Jessica Sonny from Springfield, who was recommending approval of the, of the plans.
Are there any other questions or concerns from the board?
Oh, just, just one, one other thing I just wanted to touch on, because, because Mr. Minio is not here, who's been working with DPW. They are continuing to work on the traffic study, but I, they did not see that as a reason to hold up the approval. As is noted in the condition of the school, you know, a review and approval from, by DPW is required. So they're continuing to work on that with, with, with the school, so I would just move ahead. If it's the purview of the board, to move ahead with the approval.
Okay, thank you, Phil. If there are no other questions or concerns, I'll accept a motion to close the hearing.
Motion to close the hearing.
Thank you, Jen. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leo. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion regarding this petition?
Go ahead, Rosemary.
I knew you were going to do that. Excuse me. Oh, see, I can't. I make a recommendation. I make a recommendation to approval with the following conditions. One, this site plan approval is granted solely for the reuse of an existing building for a K through 8 charter school at the property known as 2071 Roosevelt Ave. Two, the use shall be developed in accordance to the attached site plans and elevations with the addition of conditions number four and number eight. Three, all landscaping shall be installed as per the attached plans. Four, there shall be no curb cuts into Roosevelt Ave. Five, there shall be no pickup or drop off students on Memorial Drive or Roosevelt Ave. Six, all queuing of vehicles for pickup and drop off shall take place on site. Seven, in addition to the planning board site plan approval, a full review by the Department of Public Works as per the provisions of City Ordinance Chapter 27, Article 8, Sections 27 through 58 through 27 to 63 will be required. This review shall include the approval of the traffic study and traffic management plan. This approval must be obtained prior to the issuance of a building permit and/or a certificate of occupancy. Eight, any and all building permits, including signed permits, shall be obtained prior to start of any work. Nine, compliance with these conditions, as well as with any and all zoning regulations, is required. Failure to comply may result in denial of the issuance of a building permit and/or occupancy permit. Revocation of any permits issued and/or enforcement by the Code Enforcement Department punishable by fines of up to $200 per day for each day a violation exists. Approval criteria findings. One, the project complies with all applicable provisions and requirements of Springfield zoning ordinance, including all use, dimensional, site utility, and overlay district standards. The project will avoid significant detrimental environmental impacts, including stormwater runoff, erosion, or sedimentation. Three, the project will ensure adequate light and air quality for adjacent properties and minimizes detrimental visual impacts on adjacent uses and public streets, parks, buildings, and other public places. Four, the project will not impair pedestrian safety or overload existing roads considering their current width, surfacing, and condition. Five, the project will provide adequate access for fire, police, and emergency vehicles. Six, the project will minimize noise, dust, odors, solid waste, flare, or any other nuisances in accordance with the city ordinance. Seven, the project has no impacts on historic research, resources as determined by Section 12.7 of the Springfield Zoning Ordinance.
Thank you, Rosemary. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jen. Phil, if you would do the roll call?
Voting in favor, Martin Cunningham, absent. Mr. Minio, absent. Mr. Daniele, absent. Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Joy?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, Phil, our next?
Okay. Why do we always need to go this fast? So, under, this is now our new item, under public hearings, a liquor licensed beer and wine package store, new, location 1686 Boston Road, petitioner OSIL Spirits, continuing to do business as Ocean J- Ocean State Job Lot, number 258.
Okay. Mr. Kaiser, will you be speaking for Ocean State?
I actually would be speaking. Sorry to interrupt. I'm corporate counsel for OSJL Spirits.
That's quite all right. Lisa, if you would state your name and address for the record, please.
Absolutely. My name is Lisa Adelman, A-D-E-L-M-A-N. And my address, what, the workplace address, does that matter?
That's fine.
Okay, 375 Commerce Park Road in North Kingstown, Rhode Island, 02852.
Thank you. If you would state your petition, please.
Yes, the, we are seeking a, just a beer and wine package license at the Ocean State Job Lot Store located at the 1686 Boston Road. Here with me, as I've already indicated, is the manager of record, or would be the manager of record on that license, Bob Kaiser. The beer and wine setup at, within the store is, would be very small. The display area is estimated to be at 170 square feet, with the storage area in the back of 86 square feet, for a total square footage of 256 square feet dedicated to beer and wine within the store. At any time when the beer and wine is not on display and it's being stored, it will be within a locked cage, and the product is displayed just on shelves and pallets. We are not, at this time, intending to install any coolers. We have a very strict alcohol policy, internal alcohol policy, but we are also well-equipped and prepared to tips train all of our associates prior to their handling of any beer and wine. Any associates under the age of 18, which right now I believe the store has just one associate that's under the age of 18, per our policy, and obviously the law is, does not touch any beer and wine or at any time, whether they're stocking or, or checking someone out, a customer out. And we are really prepared to provide, we do keep a binder at the front of the store of all our tips trained, the certificates. We ensure that all registers are equipped with both a ID checking guide and a blacklight to check all licenses. Our policy, company policy is to check all customers that are, customer IDs that are seeking to purchase beer and wine. There's no exceptions to this. And our associates are asked to partner with management if there are any issues per the customer's end on that policy. The product that we're seeking to sell is, is a little, I shouldn't say a little, it's unique in the fact that the intention is to only sell closeout products or products that are privately labeled for OSJL Spirits. So you're not going to come in and find, you know, Bud Light stocked up or, you know, your, your typical product that's unique in the fact that it, you know, really isn't there to compete with surrounding package stores. And I think too, both because it's not, it's not refrigerated and it's kind of more of a unique craft beer, wine product, you know, we find it a little less appealing for individuals that are underage to try to obtain the product. The, the purpose is, you know, we're, we're a company that is built on adventure shopping, so adding in this product, we feel will give another commodity to our customers to, to come in and, and try new things and that, that sort of thing. We have gone before the Indian Orchard Neighborhood Council, that was back on March 11th. They have approved or did support our application, and we also had a City Council member, Orlando Ramos, provide a letter of support for the application. Again, the manager of record, Bob Kaiser, is here. He's been with OSJL since 1999, and he's here to answer any questions also that you may have of him. He is at the store at a minimum of 50 hours a week, I think. He'll probably tell you he ends up being there more, but... So, and I would add, this would be our eighth liquor license for OSJL Spirits in the state of Massachusetts.
Okay, and your hours of operation would be Monday through Saturday, 8:00 to 9:00 PM, and Sunday, 10 until 8:00 PM?
Our hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, Monday through Saturday, and then Sunday, 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Nine?
9:00 AM.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that one hour timeframe where we are prohibited from selling alcohol from 9:00 to 10:00 on Sunday, we actually put up blockades so that customers can't even reach the, the Bureau line prior to the, that 10:00 AM start time for sales.
Okay. And did I hear you correctly, Lisa, that you're selling closeout items for the beer?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the closeout, it's a mixture of closeout, you know, those, those specialty purchases and things that are, are privately labeled made for Ocean State or OSJL Spirits, is essentially what...
Okay.
Right now, the intention.
All right. And is, again, please excuse me if you said this, is Mr. Kaiser going to be on property the entire time? Or is there an assistant manager that might take some hours?
There are currently three assistant managers also in the store. I work about 50 hours a week.
Okay. And they've all been tips certified and...
They have not been yet. They will be before we get any product. I have been tip certified this year.
Okay. Does any of the board have any questions?
Now, yeah, it's Rosemary. These aren't singles or anything, right? Are these six packs of these cases?
They are, they're primarily six packs, from my understanding. We have in the past, I believe, done, done singles, and perhaps I shouldn't say that because I don't know that I'm positive on that. We look into making your craft selection type of a thing, but I don't, I don't think at this time we're doing that. It's just the, the actual pre-pack.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Wondering, is, is this something new? Or do they do it in other stores? And if they are, have there been any problems or is things going along okay?
Yeah, so, so we hold seven other liquor licenses in seven of our other Ocean State Job Lot store locations, so OSJL Spirits holds those license, licenses. We have had an issue in our Medford location, but those issues, those violations date back, I'm going to grab the dates for you. The first one was in June of 2015, and the second one was in May of 2016. Since then, there's been no violations at any of our locations. I can give you more information on what the violations are if you're interested in that.
No, I think that's okay. We're fine.
Okay, anyone else? If I hear no other questions or concerns from the board, I'll accept a motion to close this, oh, to table this hearing, excuse me.
Yeah, continue.
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing.
Thank you, Leo. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jen. All those in favor? What, Phil?
I'm just going to do a roll call for that vote.
Okay, that's fine.
So Mr. Cunningham's absent, Mr. Minio is absent, Mr. Daniele, absent, Ms. Moran?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Di Filippo?
Yes.
Mr. Florian?
Yes.
Ms. McQuade?
Yes.
And Ms. Joy?
Yes.
So again, this will be, this will be voted on at the next planning board hearing. Again, just because of the setup we have here with Zoom, so... Mr. Ha...
Thank you.
Go ahead.
We'll see you next meeting.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
No.
Yeah, Mr., yeah. Just wanted to let Zahora know that his item was heard previously. So your, your item has been approved for the zone change. We went through that relatively quickly, so you're offset.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any non subs?
No, I had one, but I actually was looking at it again this morning, and there was a zoning issue, so that's not going to be approved. So the next hearing, just so everybody knows, is, is July 15th, because we only meet once in July and once in August. I do have, so far, I think I I do have, so far, I think I have three liquor licenses for that particular hearing, so it shouldn't be a long hearing. You know, just so everyone knows, as far as, as I can tell, these Zoom meetings are going to continue for a while. I don't know anytime soon that they're going to end. You know, for the sake of focus Springfield and the Law Department, they are asking that we kind of continue to hold these around 5:00 p.m., with the number of meetings being held on Zoom that have to be, again, played on focus, it's easier for them to do these earlier than later, so we're going to continue to try and do these at 5:00, if that works for everybody. And then, at some point, hopefully, we get back to some type of normal, but at this point, it looks like July and probably August. Definitely July, and at some point, August is, is probably looking like a Zoom as well, so.
Okay. All right, I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
Motion moved.
Thank you, Rosemary. Leo, you second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice month of the rest of June and July. Take care.
You too. Bye-bye.